November the tenth, if Ms. Cavalero can establish our quorum.
President Householder?
Here.
Vice President Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalero, and then we are going to break for our closed session. We have two items on our closed session this evening. The first one is potential litigation, pending litigation in conference with legal counsel, which is pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine. And then item B is going to be conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator for us is going to be Jessica Romeo, and the employee organization is Antioch Education Association and our classified school employees association. Chapter eighty-five. Hello? Okay, there I am. All right, and so with that, we are going to break for our closed session, and then we will be back at seven P. M. for re-establishment of our quorum. Thank you, Ms. Cavalero, and then we are going to break for our closed session. We have two items on our closed session this evening. The first one is potential litigation, pending litigation in conference with legal counsel, which is pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine. And then item B is going to be conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator for us is going to be Jessica Romeo, and the employee organization is Antioch Education Association and our classified school employees association. Chapter eighty-five. Hello? Okay, there I am. All right, and so with that, we are going to break for our closed session, and then we will be back at seven P. M. for re-establishment of our quorum.
Calling this meeting back to order. It is Wednesday, November tenth at 7:01 PM. If, I believe, first up, re-establishment of quorum. So Ms. Cavalier, can we re-establish our quorum?
Yes. President Householder?
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis?
Present.
Trustee Hack?
I'd be here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. And then, we met in closed session on two items. First item, item A, was potential litigation, pending litigation conference with legal counsel, which is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Office of Administrative Hearings, Proposed Agreement Regarding Case Number 2021090242. And the Board approved this Office of Administrative Agreement Regarding Case Number, I'm going to say it again, 2021090242. That motion was made by Trustee Hack, and it was seconded by Trustee Rocha, and the motion carried in a 5-0 vote. Next up, we have our conference with our labor negotiator. Our agency representative was Jessica Romeo. The employee organizations are AEA and CACA, and there was no reportable, uh, no, no reportable action taken on that item. So next up, we have our flag salute. And so, I guess we can all say the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And next up, we have our superintendent reports.
Yes, good evening. So, today, we had a very successful first day in partnership with the Ponte Vedra County Department of Public Health and Kaiser Permanente. We are offering vaccine clinics for all five and older families, employees, and, um, so that went well. It's going to continue through Friday. The hours are 9:00 AM to 6:30, and then on Saturday, they are going 9:00 to 4:30. And that's at Antioch High School, the BD Auditorium this week. And then next week, we'll be holding a clinic here at the Portables on the corner of Sagebrush and Lone Tree Way, same hours, and again on Saturday. And then, I had an opportunity. I reached out to, as you'll recall, the Board is interested in having a parliamentarian attend meetings. And, um, I spoke with somebody who's very interested in that, and she's going to get back to me by Friday. She has some personal commitments, so she wants to make sure that she can be fully committed before she, um, commits. How's that? And I also met with the, um, with the consultant that the Board approved at the last meeting for Board governance. And so, you'd be expecting this next week, some dates and times, um, so that we can make sure that we have a quorum for those. And that concludes, oh, and I also want to say thank you to all the veterans. Um, we'll be celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow, and thank you all for your service. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Anello. So, moving right along, we have school reports, and we have a site representative this evening from Antioch Middle School. So I don't know if someone in, yay, wants to introduce it. Okay, yeah.
This is the wonderful principal, Ms. Leah Douglas. So she is here to share all of the wonderful things that are happening at Antioch Middle School.
Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Board Trustees and Community. My name is Leah Jones Douglas, also known as Principal Douglas or Ms. Douglas, and I am the principal at Antioch Middle School, where together we soar. So just a little bit about myself, this is my eighth year in Antioch Unified. I was at Dallas Ranch Middle School for seven years as a vice principal. The last six months of that, I was interim principal, and education to me is very personal. I grew up in a complicated situation, but moved around a lot, and so I attended many different schools. I knew that education was going to be a key in helping myself, my family, and my community. And so I also noticed, depending on what school I was at, um, where I was living, that the opportunities in education was different. And so that's always been kind of my driving factor, is to make education accessible for everybody and have those opportunities and that excellence. I had a teacher my third grade year, Ms. Amy Hefner, who cared about me more than just the academics, but the relationship as well. And so that really, um, helped me to realize that relationships, um, and just community was really important, and so that's a big factor in kind of what I do day to day as an educator. So I believe that it really does take a village, and that we have to partner with the community and our families and our staff in order to help our students to be the best that they can be. So that's just a little bit about myself. As you will see on the presentation, the word cloud that you see there actually came from our staff. It was the first staff development day that we were all together. And this was a, a big deal because for almost eighteen months, our staff hadn't been together. So it was really about building that community with the staff, just getting them reaffirmed to being on the campus and being together. And so what we asked them to do was really to look at what are the values that are important at Antioch Middle School? And so as you can see there, if you're not familiar with word clouds, we asked them to pick their top three. They put them kind of on a sticky note. I put them all into a word cloud. And so the more the word shows up in the word cloud, the bigger the word gets. And so as you can see, kind of the top four were equitable, community, growth, and responsibility. So this being my first day there, I was very excited because those really fit into the values that I believe as well. So I believe, and a lot that we talked about our first staff development day, was really about telling our own narrative. A lot of the times, the narrative is told for us, and that can sometimes be negative. So it's really about presenting all the positive things that are going on at Antioch Middle School. I do wanna be transparent, though. The first quarter has been challenging. Um, with, you know, the pandemic, COVID, um, the trauma that was faced not only by our students and by our families, but also staff, staffing issues, technology issues, or the combination of things. And so we're really gonna focus on the positive day, but I do wanna be transparent that there were challenges and that there were students that were not meeting those expectations that we had, and we're continuing to work through those challenges and move towards a more positive, uh, Antioch Middle School. So in being all about the whole child, when the school wellness will was presented to middle schools last January, I believe it was, um, I was ecstatic. I was so excited because this really showed the whole child, that we have to look at the mastery-based learning, trauma-responsive schooling, as well as the culturally responsive teaching, and all of those things have to come together for our students to be successful. Um, Ms. Avara actually presented the idea that it's an inflatable tube, right? And so all of these things have to work together, and if they don't, if there's a hole in the mastery-based learning or the trauma-responsive schooling, that it all falls apart. And so it's really that concept of all of these things are entwined, they're integrated, they're not separate. Um, one idea that for like the mastery-based learning is looking at how we assess our kids and giving them that choice. Um, so that's just one example that exhibits the trauma-responsive schooling, as well as the culturally responsive teaching, and that high academic excellence. So at the center of the school wellness will are those principles that you see there. Um, those are the key principles in building a healing and resilient school. And so, um, it really looks at the idea that we are not expecting our students to come in with the skills that they need in terms of the social skills and all of the self-regulation skills. Um, and that, that's part of our job is to teach that. And so those principles of a healing and resilient school are really the core of why we do what we do, um, the importance of the social-emotional learning, that it has to be an important ingredient in learning. And so we're really focusing on those principles of a healing and resilient school. One of the first things that I did when I came in was we as a staff talked about these. Where are we as a staff? Do we feel how important these are? Um, and I was very excited that, I would say, almost a hundred percent felt that there wasn't one that was more important than the other, that all of these working together is really key in order to transform our schools. Uh, the other slide that you see down there that has the sticky notes, that's actually a bulletin board that was created in our hallway, and it says Words That Heal. And one of the teachers, just with the trauma and the things that are going on with our students, just was trying to think of an idea or a way to have some positive. And so she asked her class, just on sticky notes, to just put words that could help heal people. And so as kids walk through in the hallways, they're able to see some of those words there, and so that's something that's in our hallways. The idea of the natural discipline style or the social discipline window, you'll see the axes. There's the high expectations, the low expectations, and then there's the low support and the high expecta- or high support. Um, and so really at Antioch Middle School, we are looking at that high support, but also high expectations. So doing things with people rather than to people, or not doing anything at all, or doing things for people. And so when we say with, it really is looking at, um, getting the voice and opinion of our students, of our families. Sometimes as adults, we feel like we have the answers, that we know what we can do, but we're not asking those people that are involved. So we do student surveys, which, uh, we're in the process of doing that right now. We have a parent survey that'll be going out next week, and we do staff surveys regularly. So it's really looking at how do we do things with each other and not to or for. So you'll hear a lot of me talk about the village and the partnership, and that's really what I'm talking about, that idea of doing things with. Sorry, guys, I'm nervous if you can't.
You're doing great.
Thank you. So restorative practices, this is huge at Antioch Middle School. Um, I've been working with restorative practices before I was even in Antioch Unified School District. I'm a huge proponent of restorative practices. I've seen it in action, I've seen it work. Um, where you see the arrow right there, that's kind of where we commonly think of those restorative practices, so those conferences, the more formal conferences. But as you can see, restorative practice is a spectrum. So it starts with the way that we're talking to students, um, and then having those community-building circles. And so what we're doing as a staff, we're working with the WAC team, the Wellness and Climate and Culture. So we do ongoing trainings around the restorative practices at Antioch Middle School. And so not with just our teachers, but also with our site safety, with our classified staff, our office staff, because this really has to be a, um, whole approach with all of our staff involved. And it comes from not just, you know, when there's an issue, it's really building that community. Because you can't repair community if there isn't anything built. So it's really those positive building relationships on all levels, and so that's really what we're working on, um, with restorative practices. I was actually involved in a conference recently where we had two girls that just continued with the drama. And so we met with the girls, the families, um, our director was there as well. And from that conference, one of the things that is asked is what is needed in order to repair the harm? And so we go around, and that's asked to everyone that's in the circle. And so as an administrator, we let them know that, that it does impact us and that we as women need to be empowering each other and not fighting and breaking each other down. And so one of the things I asked for them is that they needed to meet with me regularly, so at least once a month, and they're gonna be a part of building like a girl power group on our campus, where we'll be working with Antioch High School and their girl power group, as well as Fremont Elementary School. And so a way that we can combine, uh, these resources and really girls talking to each other and lifting each other up. So that was part of what happened out of a restorative conference. Uh, really, restorative practice is a mind shift. We do see some pushback. Um, because there's a misconception of you sit in a circle, you say you're sorry, and you move on, and that's not correct. Uh, the people that are really impacted and involved really come to that solution. They get to say what they need in order for that, um, harm to be repaired. So I encourage you, if you have not already, to meet with our WAC team. They will go over the wellness will and the social discipline window. If you can be a part of any kind of restorative practices circles, um, you really have to experience and just being in a room with families and families that, you know, exchange numbers at the end and say, if there's an issue, call me. Um, it's really building that community, which I think is huge in that partnership. So here are some of our school-wide expectations. We call it the Eagle Way because we are pride eagles. Um, so we are kind, safe, and responsible. And so the examples that you see up there are in the classrooms. So every area, we look at what does the behavior look like in the library, in the quad, um, in the bathrooms, in the hallways. And there's a series of lessons that have been created and some videos. And so beginning of the year, admin went into each class, and we reviewed the school-wide expectations, um, and gave examples. And then throughout the first semester, first quarter, we had the lessons that are being taught during the advisory period. And so once those lessons are taught, they complete a form. There's like a competition in regards to, you know, how many forms can be turned in, um, and we really make it a, a positive school-wide expectations. Sometimes there's a lot of focus on the negative, but we have so many students that are doing and meeting those expectations daily. Um, so it's really about recognizing those positive behaviors. We have what we call eagle tickets, and so those can be exchanged at our student store. Teachers have different prizes within their classrooms that they can use those for, and again, it's about that positive recognition. And we have competitions, um, weekly. Uh, we have raffles that are drawn. So there's a lot of that positive behavior and that positive recognition that's happening. So here is a list of some of the opportunities on campus. And so I like to call them opportunities rather than programs, because I think sometimes when you hear programs, it's like, oh, that's gonna be there for a minute, and then it's, it's gonna go away. These are different opportunities that are available on campus. So we have our restorative practices, which we talked about. We actually have an avid class, so it's an elective class, but we also have school-wide avid strategies that we're using, and we do regular professional developments around that. Um, so we have a STEM class as well as a STEM club, and you can go down the list. Um, we have a strong E L D program. We have a really strong leadership class. And our leadership class is not just making posters and, you know, putting together events. It's really, we have curriculum that we're using to build leaders within our school and within our community. Um, so that's been really exciting to see. We have the Intercultural, so the manhood development program on our campus. We're working with the Mindful Life Project. Um, we have a care team. So students who are struggling, they need some additional supports or interventions, we have a care team where we talk about those students. And in that care team, it actually helps us to also look at what other supports do we not have available on campus that we need for our kids? Um, and so it starts that conversation about what would that look like. Um, we are in the process of developing a fitness center that is on our campus. So we have the equipment. It's just about getting it built and put together. We have a wonderful library, um, that we partner with the public library as well, but the library is open during lunchtimes, and the kids can go in there, read books, and then play games and that type of thing. Um, let's see, we talked about the girl empowerment. Uh, we partner, as some of you may know, with the Antioch Rotary Club, and, and we do a girl empowerment event every year. This year, we're looking at how do we incorporate that throughout the year, whether that's another event or, um, some kind of lessons at Antioch Middle School. We're gonna incorporate it through lessons and classes so that it's not just we're focusing just on the girls and empowerment, but also the boys, and one voice, and how do we work together to empower each other? Um, and so part of that is those groups that I had talked about, where we'll be partnering with the high school as well as the elementary school with that girl empowerment. We have a student council. Um, we have the Read one eighty and Math one eighty, which we are looking at implementing for those students who need that additional academic support. We have the Renaissance Program and, and go on and on and on and on. I'm sure there's other things that are not on the list, but there's a lot of opportunities on campus for our students. So we have a VAC program, um, which is amazing. I, that's one of my favorite classes to go into, and to hear the band at the beginning of the year, um, even to now. It, the growth has been huge. Um, we had to start outside, and so we knew when it was band time because we could hear it all through the school, and we're like, that's beginning band as opposed to advanced band. Um, but they really are growing. We were actually able to host a Harvest Festival where all of our performers were there. We were, uh, allowed to have parents on campus. It was all outside, masks on, all the protocols were followed. But they were able to see their students perform, which hasn't happened in, in a year and a half. Um, so it was really nice to have families on campus, students there. Along with the performances, we had games and activities for the kids. Um, so it was just really nice to have the kids back together and just having fun together. So that was a, a great event. So A M S staff community. Um, Antioch Middle School has great staff. They love what they do, um, and are really invested in the wellness work and the trauma-informed practices and the mastery-based learning, the culturally responsive teaching. And so this picture here is from a Unity Day that we did. And so one of our teachers, Ms. Garcia, made all the shirts. Um, and it was a day that we encouraged our students to wear orange as well. And it was just about, you know, accepting others, inclusivity, uh, no bullying. And so kids that had the color orange on during lunch, we had different prizes for them. And so that is one of the activities that we did. Um, the staff there does, you know, staff potlucks. They did a chili cook-off, which is a big deal because there's a rainy winter, and everyone's trying to beat him. So, um, they had a chili cook-off. We do breakfast potlucks. Um, November, the staff decided, the staff club, they put out thank you cards. And we're encouraging for the month of November just to write a thank you card to someone. Um, and that's been fun to, to see the staff receive some of those thank you cards. We do different celebrations. So one of our teachers, um, was out, his, he, his wife had a baby, and so we did a little baby shower. Um, so our staff community is just, is great, and it's not just our teachers, our classified staff, our office, our custodians, our site safety, our instructional aides. Um, we really do work as a community together. So here's a picture of some of our lunchtime activities. We believe that it's important to have connection and fun. Um, obviously, we have those high expectations, but there needs to be fun as well. And so that's just a list of the different lunchtime activities. Our leadership program hosts activities throughout lunchtime. We have a student store, which I had mentioned, that the students can use their eagle tickets to buy different things. But there's basketball and football and four-square and wall ball. Um, and it's been fun to go out and play four-square and wall ball with the kids. Like, they think it's hilarious that they sometimes can't beat me, and so it's been, it's been fun. And that builds that relationship with the kids as well. Um, we had a situation where the kids, there was trash left on the basketball court. And so I said, there's trash, we're not gonna be able to have basketball. So a kid came to me, said, you know, Ms. Douglas, I'm gonna talk to the kids. We're gonna make sure that it gets cleaned up. Can we play? And he met with those group of kids. They made sure that it was cleaned up, and they continued to play. So we opened up the gym for him one day, and that, you know, that was just exciting. So it's about building those connections and having that fun as well. We do have a ton of student clubs. Um, so these are clubs that are interest to students. So we have a student council, a Black Student Union, art club, and you can see all the different ones that are there. The picture there is, we did what we call a club rush. And so all the different clubs that we have on campus kind of set up a table. And the kids during lunchtime were able to go around and listen and hear what the club is about and sign up. So any kid that wants to participate in any club can do as many as they want to. It's not too late to, you know, join any kind of club. And we encourage students that if there is a club that you want to create, because we don't have it, that you, you do that. And that we find a staff member so that we have those activities for students to be connected to. Sports. So you can see some of our pictures up there are from our flag football. We just ended our flag football season. We took second place. Our basketball season tryouts has started, so that's going to be in the process coming soon. We have volleyball and soccer. And so just a thank you to Powell, who helps to support our middle school sports. And also a special thank you to the Antioch Rotary Club. They helped to build a stage in our, one of our classrooms for our ballet vocal org. So that is appreciated, so thank you. And really being about community, we really want our families to be involved. So we have our AMS groups, which is the Eagle Parent Group. We have an ELAC and a school site council. And so the pictures below there are trunk or treat activity that we had that was part of the Harvest Festival and that was hosted and sponsored by the Eagle Parent Group. And so, again, we are big on the partnership and building those community. And so families and parents and caregivers are vital and huge. And so we really encourage families to join one of those groups because we really do need a partnership and it does take a village in order for us to help our students to succeed and be prepared for the next grade. We do also have an after-school program. And students are allowed to enroll at any point. So if there's any student that wants to be a part of the after-school program, we definitely encourage that. Within the after-school program, they're looking at similar to the wellness wheel. So they're focusing on academics, but also the trauma and the trauma-informed practices, different activities just to connect students. And so that has been a big asset is the after-school program because that provides support for students who may need it. Here are some of the community partnerships that we have so far. I'm hoping that this continues to grow because as I said, I'm huge on the partnerships and working together. And so we partner with the Antioch Rotary Club as well as the Antioch Activities League. We have the White Pony Express that comes every Wednesday to our multipurpose room and we open it to the community to come in and get food. We partner with the Antioch Public Library. We're working on a PBIS lesson on what the expectations are when they go to the library. I've met with the library, they have eagle tickets over there. And so when kids are meeting those expectations, they hand out those eagle tickets. The librarian has my cellphone, so she calls if there's issues. And then we have the Bay Area Community Resources, which is part of that, that's who sponsors after-school program. So that is Antioch Middle School in a nutshell. You'll see the beautiful murals that we have on campus. So there's the eagle and then the eagle pride. And so I just appreciate the time to be able to talk about Antioch Middle School. So thank you.
Thank you so much. If you can just stay up for a quick second too, in case any of us have questions. You did really, really good. This was fantastic. And I know that we all love as a board and as a community, seeing these pictures and then hearing the anecdotes. I especially liked hearing that that young man was very adamant that he wanted to keep playing baseball. So that was a cute story, so thank you for sharing. Is there any other comments? Do folks have questions, Dr. Lewis?
Yes, so first of all, thank you for coming and sharing the information about AHS. You know, I've, it's always exciting to hear the wonderful things going on in our community, as President Householder said. I just had a quick question about the after-school program. So is it, is it a rolling deadline or is it sort of a one and done? Is there a timeframe?
No, there is, it's ongoing throughout the year. So it's based on, you know, availability. And so there may be a waitlist depending on that, but you're allowed to enroll at any point.
Okay, and what time does that, what's the timeframe for?
So right after school till about six o'clock every day.
Until about 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
Trustee Rocha?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry about this. Thank you very much. I really enjoyed your presentation. It was well done. I'm interested in the restorative practices. And because we haven't had a chance to come to visit, when would be a good time to come to visit at your school?
So we, like I said, with the restorative practices, we really look at that spectrum. So you'll be able to see restorative practices in the way that our staff is talking to our students as well as some of those more formal conferencing. So if, we can let you know when we have kind of a formal conference. We like to make sure that the families that are involved are okay with it, just as a visitor. And so those are set up when there's situations where we need to have those conferences. So it's not like an everyday thing where, you know, fifth period, we have the conferences. So if you are interested, I can definitely reach out when we do have those conferences.
Would you put me on your list for special times that you would like us to come and visit? Because that's been one of our issues. We don't want to interfere, but at the same time, we want to be understanding of what's going on at your school.
Right, yes, definitely.
I'd like to be added as well.
Yes, I will include everybody.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. This was very awesome. I have a big broad question. For Antioch Middle School, how is it that, you know, how would you say that you guys measured success? Like what is, at the end of the year, you know, what lets you know that this was a really great year? And given the pandemic that we just had, it's absolutely fine if your answer is we made it to the end because that is a huge accomplishment in itself considering everything that's happened.
So definitely a little bit of that. But I am also big on looking at different forms of assessment. So we have like the satellite data that we look at. So those are like the S-VAC, you know, scores, those big kind of formative assessments. But I also believe that we need to look at some of those informal assessments as well as student voice and, and get that feedback as well. So that's done through surveys, talking to students, focus groups, talking to families. Really finding, do you feel connected to school? So it's not just based on our typical, you know, you did this in English and this in math. We measure success in terms of, do you feel connected? Do you feel like there's someone on school site that you have a relationship with in terms of the academic as well? So we look at the mastery-based learning. And we're working on that and looking at the proficiency skills and really making it clear to students and staff of what level needs to be met in order to master those standards. So we look at a combination of assessments and not just one kind of formative assessment. So it'll be a combination of those different things at the end of the year.
Awesome, very cool. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
And then trustee Hack? Questions or comments?
No, no, I'm just thinking. It's a great presentation, obviously. But I, I'm sort of weird. I drive down every day with my dog in the back of my van and she barks at everything in the world. But anyway, we go by Antioch Middle School. And Antioch Middle School, the playground right there has been empty for a year or two and nobody's ever out there. And now all of a sudden, I go by and there's kids playing and doing sports and whatever. So we pull into the library parking lot and I sit there for 10 or 15 minutes and say, that's cool. The kids are out there and they're doing stuff again. And that, of course, is because of you and because of the teachers and the kids themselves, but they seem to be enjoying it. So education's back. So I love sitting there, even though my dog wants to go bark at other dogs, but I love watching these kids just doing their thing.
Yeah, it's been amazing to have students back on campus. We definitely have missed it. But I think some have forgotten what it's like to have middle schools on campus as well. So when we talk about re-accommodating our students and families, also our staff. And so it's just been really nice to kind of get back to a normal, as normal as it can be right now and just seeing kids be kids and enjoying themselves, definitely.
So one of the things I've decided to do this year is to go through every school site and see what's going on in the site. So somewhere down the road, I won't bring my dog, but I want to talk to you that day. Yeah, cool.
Of course, of course. We've actually caught a couple of dogs on our campus this year, so yes.
And then I'll just end with a quick comment and a question. So as a former Antioch Middle School student, just very excited to see all of the things that you're doing. A lot of the old tradition's still there. And then you've built up quite a bit and so just really amazing. I was in leadership as well and I do feel like it made a difference. And then the question that I have is just, if folks do want to become partners with Antioch Middle School, should they reach out to you? Should they reach out to the VP? How's the best way, you know, for the community to be one of your partners?
To reach out to me, definitely. Or my VP, that's fine too. But yeah, we definitely want to partner with as many community partnerships as we can. And so I'm open to any partnership, so go ahead and give me a call or an email.
Wonderful. Thank you so much if there's no other comments. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, so moving on to our public comment section. I know we haven't had in-person meetings, so if you do want to fill out a comment on something not on the agenda or on the agenda, but we're not on the agenda right now, please fill out one of these pieces of paper. There's a box over here. So first up, we have our individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. And this is from the public. And we have Velma Wilson at first. And then after that, well, there's not that many, but Lindsay Amesqua. Thank you for spelling it out phonetically. It's very nice.
Good evening, AUSD Board Trustees, Superintendent and the entire district staff. I am Velma Wilson, representing Velma Wilson. Count on me through thick and thin. A friendship that will never end. When you are weak, I will be strong, helping you to carry on. Call on me, I will be there. Don't be afraid. Please believe me when I say, count on, you can count on me. With so many things going on in our community in the face of adversity, I just want to remind everyone, every trustee, that you really can count on me. Please remember tomorrow is Veterans Day. I highly encourage every board member and the entire community to come out to the Antioch community, Antioch Marina, to hear our student speakers for this year. We will have fourth grader Annabelle Van Dyke from Mission Elementary and eighth grader Blake West from Park Middle School speaking and reflecting on Veterans Day. We will also have the infamous Battle of the Bands with Antioch High School, Deer Valley High School, Liberty and so many more. Again, show the students you really support them by coming out. The event starts at 10:00 AM and the parade is at 11:00. As the holidays approach, please let us reflect on what it really truly means to be grateful. I'm grateful for each and every one of you for stepping up into serving. This has been a tough year. I won't see you possibly on the next board meeting because I will be having major surgery. But I just want you to know, it's not easy to serve, but everybody can serve. Respect that in every position. Stephanie, I want to tell you, I am always and forever proud of the work that you have done in this district. Despite it all, despite the things that you may have faced, you truly can count on me. Thank you, Mary Rocha, for your love and your support. Clyde, thank you for coming every time I've reached out. I can't seem to say the same for you Ellie or for Antonio. But as you still sit on this board, I want you to remember why you became a school board trustee. To serve the students and families of AUSD loudly and proudly. Gary, thank you for always reaching out and giving those notes of thanks. If you're interested, there's a Friendsgiving that's going to be happening at Deer Valley High School with a group of young ladies that we call Girl Space. Come out and just show your face on the 18th and just let them know you care.
Next up, we have Lindsay Amesqua.
Good evening Superintendent Anello, district staff, board trustees. My name is Lindsay Amesqua and I thank you for recognizing me and letting me speak this evening. I know that the last several meetings have been full of mostly hostility, negativity and condemnation. So in the spirit of the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, I wanted to come up tonight and speak about all of the positive things that I've seen happening over the last several months and to thank you all. Trustee Hack, I am not sure we would all be here together tonight if it wasn't for your perseverance in discussing the return to in-person board meetings. There is a sense of community and camaraderie that has been lost over the last 18 months and I thank you for researching what the other districts were doing and repeatedly bringing back that item so that we can all be here tonight. Trustee Hernandez, your dedication to the digital vibe and the inequity regarding access to technology is admirable. COVID has highlighted the disparity that's existed since I was in school. And while this pandemic has been devastating on so many levels, it has put a focus on bridging the gap that exists. Thank you for your determination in ensuring all students have access to the same educational resources. Trustee Rocha, I love your passion for both cultural inclusion and equal access for information in other languages. As the matriarch of a Latino family, I have seen the struggles that come from not just, from those that not speak English as a first language, especially in regards to being able to be involved in their children's education. Study after study has illustrated that students do better in school when they have involved parents. And I want to thank you for your dedication to achieving the goal that all parents are able to aid in their students' education. Superintendent Anello, I admire your continued leadership even in the face of adversity. A weaker person might have buckled under the weight that you've been carrying over the last year, but you've handled it with grace and determination. Seth Berkeley said it perfectly, leadership is about vision and responsibility, not power. Thank you for always acting in the best interest of AUSD and not giving up when others would. Vice President Lewis, I left this for last because this subject is near and dear to my heart. Thank you for bringing forward the ROTC and JART-OTC items. As the daughter of a former Marine, I know that the discipline and structure that military provides leads to a successful and rewarding life most of the time. I also know that not every student's educational path leads them through college and that some find the ultimate fulfillment in serving others. Of all of the agenda items that were brought forward to discussion over this last year, these two are my favorite and the most unique and I look forward to more of them from you. Once again, thank you all. Together, we are AUSD.
All right, next up, we have Crystal Sawyer White.
Good evening, President Householder, Superintendent Anello and staff. Sorry, this mask thing. As a parent, former school board trustee and as an Antioch resident for 17 years, I felt compelled to address the Antioch Board of Education Support, President Ellie Householder, who advocates for social justice pertaining to African-American students and students of color. A recall threat is once again a bullying tactic to deter President Householder to lead AUSD in a new direction. Ellie first questioned the board once I was not elected as president and she has been attacked ever since. This has to stop. Holding the superintendent accountable and evaluating her has not been properly completed for the past six years. The superintendent should be evaluated four times a year. This still has not occurred. President Householder has agendized numerous items, which is her role as president and it is relevant to the students of this district. I worked with President Householder on my agenda items such as board bylaws, revisions, safety comprehension plan and electing a school board, a student board trustee. That still has not happened yet. Safety is a serious issue with Deer Valley High School in particular, since we're here now. It is difficult for me to drive by Deer Valley High School on my way home, knowing that what happened to John John Parker was shot and killed on this campus and we still have not addressed a safety comprehension plan. To reassure me as a parent, I have a 15-year-old and other parents have conveyed to me that they want to be reassured that they are safe in all campuses of AUSD. The first priority is to open this fall. The superintendent should have given a reopening presentation I was waiting to hear to reassure- have given a reopening presentation I was waiting to hear, to reassure all parents, staff, and teachers due to pandemic protocols. AUSD was the only district, someone notified me from another source, that did not address a reopening plan of all of East County public schools. It's time for a new superintendent that believes in transparency. This is key. Common courtesy and respect for one another has not been exhibited towards President Householder. Even the secrets that come up to the mic, they don't even address her as President Householder. This is baffling. This needs to stop. We are parents, and we should set an example for our children, especially for AUSD. Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Deborah Vincent. And then that seems to be our last public comment from the community on non-agendized items.
Good evening, board trustees, community members. So trustee Householder, thank you for being an upstander in the lives of Black and Brown students in AUSD. Today, the needs of students are greater than it has ever been in the history of public education. Bias, racism, inequities across learning domains, and social, emotional, and mental health needs that are unparalleled and demanding due to the pandemic. Pre-pandemic academic outcomes for students was bleak, and the data metrics for our students highlighted this on the California dashboard. Today, there has been little improvement in the academic lives of students in AUSD, all students, including those with special needs. It is unconscionable that the educational and scholastic needs of Black and Brown students have gone unanswered and often fall on deaf ears. Students matter, families matter. It is disheartening to hear the personal attacks that trustee Householder has experienced with the advocating for Black and Brown students within this district. Black and Brown students need to know that white allies exist and will be supportive to their needs in AUSD. The students are watching and experiencing over and over again that they don't matter, because when someone speaks up to that about them and for them, those individuals are often bullied and subjected to antisocial rhetoric and actions that seek to destroy one's personhood. Ms. Householder, trustee Householder, your election gave students hope that they too can make it out of poverty and do good in their communities. 10 to 15 years ago, public schools were considered a safe haven and respite for Black and Brown students. Today, that is no longer the case. Students have to fend for themselves at school and at home, and the suicide rate among Black and Brown students is statistically today alarming. Students need hope, students need help, students need education. Recalls are smokescreens for personal temper tantrums and an unwillingness to do the work it takes to make 21st century education, public education, what students need. So trustee and President Householder, I would say stay the course, stay strong, and keep up the good work and do the right thing. And to the rest of the trustees, your own one calls.
Thank you. And then Ms. Cavalero, did we receive any more? Okay. So we're moving on to Section B now, which is individuals to address the board regarding un-agendized items from our district employees. And it looks like we only have one this evening, and it's from Michelle.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to address some of the things that I've been seeing and experiencing this school year. It's been a hard year, to say the least. And, well, at least some of us are kind of struggling. And it's disheartening to come to the board meetings and see our board leaders basically disrespecting our staff. I'd like to address just a couple of things that I noticed from the last board meeting. First, Ms. Householder, you chose to abstain from voting on the plan that would benefit our students tremendously. The ESR plan brings in $30 million to our district to address our students' needs and issues they are dealing with after a year of distance learning. The wellness centers and added staff will benefit our students. This was a very thorough plan that Ms. Abara and Ms. Romeo presented at the meeting, but yet you chose to abstain. You stated it was because the process was not followed. But even further, you made the comment about the number of staff that responded to the survey. There was over 500 staff that responded to that survey. You commented that with only 753 staff, this gave a higher voice to the staff than the community. You felt your constituents did not have a say. So to give you a little perspective, our classified staff only, that's not everybody in the district, is comprised of 760 employees approximately. 600 of those employees live in Antioch. Our classified staff are your constituents. Yet, you made a disingenuous gesture to say you didn't follow the process, and those that responded aren't your constituents. Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Lewis, 97%, 97% of our employees that responded to a survey back in September affirmed a vote of no confidence for Ms. Householder. This survey was completed over a month ago. It was put on the agenda several times, and it was removed by Ms. Householder. Regardless, it was finally addressed at the last meeting, not to actually remove her as president, but to discuss it. You both dismissed having a discussion, despite the fact that 97% of the people surveyed working in this district have no confidence in her as our board president. Our staff deserves better. We need leaders and individuals with fresh ideas and who care and support our students, the staff, and the community. Alright. Thank you.
Alright. So next up.
This was for 6A.
Okay. Oh, that one's for 6A?
It just got turned in.
Okay, yeah.
Did you want to hold it until additional comments later in the agenda?
I think we just read it now. Or, who is it? One more from community member comments. Patricia Granados. And this is, again, we're kind of just going back to 6A. So public comment, not agendized, and this is from a community member.
Hello, I apologize. I arrived a little late, and this is my first time doing this public forum in person, and thank you for doing this to the community. It's really important that the community is aware of the bullying, the harassment tactics that have been going on in Antioch for a very long time. I'm tired of it, and I'm going to keep coming up and speaking on it, because unfortunately, I feel like only a select group wants certain things done, and they're forgetting about a big part of the community. Anyone that wants change in the city that goes against that bubble of people, it's always a recall. Historically, here in Antioch, there have been a number of recalls dating back to our first African-American mayor, Wade Harper. That's just one of the individuals or city officials that was elected that was targeted. Then we have our current mayor, Lamar Thorpe, also targeted. Nicole Gardner, before she was even, before she ran, was targeted. Ms. Crystal Sawyer-White targeted. Ms. Ellie Householder targeted. Why? She's the first, I think, President Householder, you may be the first Caucasian woman that's been, or not. I'm sorry, there's whispering back here. Thank you, it's kind of distracting. Anyways, I think what you're doing is great for the community. Don't give in to this hateful bully rhetoric that the Antioch Back the Blue bullies tend to do, their whole crew. The, what is it, the Bean, the WTF, California Podcast, Mary Rocha, you know what I'm talking about. They advocate for violence on their podcast, and it's kind of sad that some of you are associated with these hateful people. You know, you used LCAP funds to support Mike Burkholder, Superintendent Anello, you contracted him for a number of years, and I asked for the records, and a lot of it seems very sketchy to me. I don't know how he got paid $1,000 the day before Christmas to go check the gyms at the schools. I want to see what work he's done to get paid, what was it, $75,000 a year using LCAP funds? I think that's extremely unethical. On top of that, all of the pay raises for senior officials that were done during the pandemic should have gone to the teachers, not to the senior elected officials. You know what I'm talking about? It's on public record. What else? There's so much. If anybody has any questions about the hateful rhetoric that these recall bullies like Arnie Simonsen, what a coincidence, he lost against President Householder, and he's the one doing the recall, I believe, or initiated it. Anyways, a bunch of little games. I have a big board with a bunch of screenshots. If anybody would like to see the hateful stuff that...
Thank you. Alright, so moving on to Item 7, which is District Reports. We don't have any this evening. Then we have Hearings. We don't have any this evening. Hey, you guys, if, this is a little bit interrupting, I can hear the conversation in the front row, so, just inside voices. So Section 9, Public Presentations, we don't have any this evening. Then Section 10, which is Consent Items. Any to pull, any questions that folks have on any of these? Or I would also entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Rocha.
I'd like to pull just, oh, just for information, or to share the information.
Okay, yeah. Any other ones? No? Okay. You don't, do you want to vote on it separately?
No, I just want to share it right now.
Perfect. Go ahead, take it away.
I just wanted to say that maybe you're not, the public doesn't know where, but this pilot city that is an agreement, service agreement, is internships for our youth, and it's providing them a variety of internships, and we're contracting with them to provide that and allow them to at least eventually be coming into entry-level jobs. And so I'm really excited about it. There's another one that's similar, is biotech, and I think that we should be, in the future, learn more about how they're getting, you know, what's going on, and how many they've been able to support. That's all. Thank you. Otherwise, I move approval of the consent items if no one else has anything on it.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. Any questions or comments? Thank you for elevating that to trustee Rocha. I think this could be one of our presentations perhaps at the end of the year. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. So Ms. Cavalero, could you call the roll on the motion to approve the consent calendar as is?
Trustee Heck?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve all consent items passes 5-0.
Thank you so much. Moving right along, Section 11, Action Items. Our first up this evening, Item A is our Antioch Unified School District Initial Proposal with Antioch Education Association, AEA, for the 21-22, for 21-22. And so I'm assuming this is Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
Correct. At the last board meeting, the board will recall that we brought forward the Antioch Education Association Initial Proposal, and the purpose of doing it in the public is to give the community an opportunity to speak. This evening is the proposal on behalf of Antioch Unified School District, and we are just staying with salary and benefits this year. I have to agree with a lot of the community. It has been a unique year, and it's been a tough year. So we're looking forward to some positive and collaborative negotiations going forward. So, thank you.
Any questions from my colleagues on this item? This is just the initial proposal? Is there a motion on this item? It is an action item, so.
Motion to approve this item?
Motion made by trustee Hernandez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis to approve the Antioch Unified School District Initial Proposal to Antioch Education Association for the 2021-2022 school year. And if there are no questions, then Ms. Cavalero can call our roll.
Trustee Heck?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the initial proposal to the Antioch, excuse me, Antioch Education Association for 2021-2022 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, moving on, Item B, Service Agreement with RCM Technologies USA, Inc. And so, I'm not sure who this goes to. Our superintendents are pointing at each other.
The item in front of the board this evening is for services with a contracted school psychologist in special education to meet students' individual IEPs, and this is the first time for this vendor, which is why it's in front of the board as an action item rather than consent.
And, you know, just for folks who might be, you know, following along with us, or folks here in the auditorium, this is something that we see typically come up a lot, depending on what that student individually needs.
That's correct.
And so this is just a new vendor. Do folks have any questions on this one, or is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Put it in motion.
Trustee Rocha moved approval of the service agreement.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Heck?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the services agreement with RCM Technology USA, Inc. passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, Item C, Commission on Teacher Credentialing Waiver of Experience for Administrative Services Credentials. I'm going to pass this back over to Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
Yes, and you heard a great presentation from Antioch Middle School earlier this evening, late in the day. This is our vice principal. Recently, CTC has changed the rules. It used to be three years of teaching experience in order to get your administrative. Midway, they changed it to five years, but you can ask for a waiver up to two years of that. So for Ms. Ashworth, we would be asking the board to waive seven months of her teaching position, and she is, again, they've made some changes, so she's doing a fantastic job, and I would ask the board to approve that this evening.
And this is, this is new for us because it is a new requirement. So any questions on this? I feel like it's kind of similar to PIT in a way, you know, where us as a board, we look at the individual.
It is another way of getting your credential similar to what you see often with teachers. This is just a new one as far as an administrator.
Any questions? Seven months? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by trustee Heck, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis to approve this waiver. And so if Ms. Cavalero can call our roll.
Trustee Heck?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve a seven-month waiver of experience with the Commission on Teaching Credentialing for Jamelia Ashworth, Vice President of Antioch Middle School, passes 5-0.
Thank you so much. Alright.
President Householder?
Oh, yes.
Can I, I just want to ask if the board would be interested. We have a consultant here on Item 18A. If the board would be perhaps interested in motioning to move that item up.
How do folks feel about motioning to suspend the rules in moving Item 18A, which is our census redistricting up? Yes. And so trustee Rocha, is that maybe perhaps a motion?
Oh, yeah. If you want to motion, yes. I move it. I'll change it to Item, it's 18 coming up right now to 14, right?
Yeah, I think it should be enough to just say to move it to now.
So we'll just move it up.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. Seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis to move item 18A, which is the post-census redistricting 2020 up to right now to accommodate for the consultant being here. Ms. Cavalero, can you call our roll?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to move item 18A forward in the agenda passes 5-0.
Thank you. And thank you Superintendent Anello. So I'm going to pass it back to you to introduce this.
All right. As you will recall, during the last election, we moved to districts instead of at-large elections. Since then, we've had a census, which requires us to go back and look at how those, those districts are drawn in case there's been a shift. And this evening, we have, I hope I say this correctly, so forgive me, Larry Shinkie from Atkinson, Andelson, Loya, Rude, and Romo. I've got all of those in. Welcome.
Not yet.
There it is. There it is. I think some of you may know my partner, David Saldani, who helped you with your creation of the trustee area districts back in 2019. I was somewhat familiar with Antioch since I was the general counsel for Mount Diablo Unified when we did the same thing. We were sort of in parallel with you all. One thing to be clear tonight, that, this is not that. This is, as was mentioned earlier, the update of your trustee area population balancing after the decennial census that's required by the US Constitution and California state law. At this point, if you'll see your, your numbers there, these are numbers from Scott Newell, who is your actually assigned demographer from Cooperative Strategies. And he has provided basically the summary of what we have gleaned from the Department of Finance and the US Census Bureau, indicating that because of the growth in your district of population not being, as it often happens, it doesn't grow exactly in within each trustee area the same. And what happened is you are now what's called 17% out of variance. And it's, that number needs to be below 10%. So tonight, you're just basically seeing the data as it's been presented by Mr. Newell. And you will be seeing, you'll be having more opportunities to discuss this. He, along with a number of folks, will be drafting some proposed maps. For some of those of you who are on the board, when you had your trustee areas created, it'll be very similar to that process because you'll be getting a number of maps based on what we think, the demographer thinks could balance your, your population, but still meet the requirements of law, which we'll talk about at the end. That's the population. This is the, if I'm not correct, this is the 2020 census data, which indicating the ethnic breakdown of your district and total population and over 18. Interestingly enough, because of the requirements of law, the balancing is, needs to be done by population, which a lot of folks have asked me this question, so I'll just answer it because I know someone will have this question. Why do we balance on population when the only people can vote are over 18? Well, the answer is, the US Constitution and the California Constitution require that trustee areas and representation be based on all, full population, whole population. It's just a quirk. It's just the way the law is and that's the way we deal with it. So that becomes a very fine point when you're trying to put together maps to balance the population and to make sure that there are, within a certain range, proportional population to the, over 18 citizens who are eligible to vote. The next item, I believe, let me see, let me get that district. This is, this is what I was talking about, the citizen voting age population estimates. They're estimates because the census does not count registered voters. It counts people, persons. So what we end up with is estimates and there's other sources of data for, for the demographers to, to determine these numbers as far as what is the voting age population. And as you can see, if you look at the numbers, and I know sometimes your eyes glaze over, mine do too when I look at the numbers, because I'm a lawyer, I'm not a demographer. You'll see that your voting age population is somewhat different than your percentage-wise, ethnically speaking, is different than your population. In this particular district, there is a higher number of Hispanic folks in the population, but a lower number of eligible Hispanic folks who could vote. That's something that needs to be accounted for. It's something that the demographers try to, to balance. But once again, we come down to population and we need to figure out if we can, give you a certain number of map, draft maps to see if we can be as closely balanced as possible. Your trustee areas, which you all may be familiar with since you had run for election in these trustee areas, as they currently exist, they are a balanced population wise. You have had the, the honor to have grown, unlike most of my clients that I have now, these suburban districts have not grown their population, but you have. So when you do that, when the, when the development occurs, like I said, it doesn't, it does not occur equally. It's like, as the, the former principals in the group will know, it's like trying balancing your grade levels. You don't have, you don't have 30 kids in every grade level in every class. You have to balance. So it's very similar in this particular context. What we have here is the overall summary page. It gives you an idea of the numbers of how, how far they are off. On the very top, in the middle, in the purple part there, it says ideal trustee area size. And to the right of it, it says 24,058. Well, if you look at the numbers in each of the trustee areas below, it varies from, I think, what is it, 25,000, 26,000 is the highest one, to as low as 22,000, which creates your, your variance. And we put the CVAP as the citizen voting age population, just all the acronyms we go through with these demographers. As you can see, those are roughly proportional, but those will change too, along with the ability, the attempt to balance the areas. So just as a matter of course, trustee area two and trustee area one will be, be reduced population wise, and they will be spread amongst probably area three and four, depending on scenarios. You know, I'm not, I'm not a demographer, so please don't ask me those technical questions. If you do have a technical question, Scott Newell will be available and obviously by email or I can give you his telephone number. You can call him directly. We've done that a number of times. Quite often, you don't want to ask the lawyer a question, you want to answer the demographer because he's the person who actually knows this and crunches the numbers. So this is where the lawyers get to talk. This is what's required to be followed when we consider balancing voting areas. And you may have seen this if you were involved in the previous process, because it's the same legal standard as far as determining population levels. Each area shall contain nearly equal number of inhabitants. That's where that word comes in, inhabitant. It's not just voting age, it's not over 18, it's inhabitants. So there you go. Drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which self-federal law, as we know, is the supreme law of the land, and it requires consideration of ethnic and racial factors so that any particular group is not underrepresented or overrepresented in any particular area. That is a very fine art. It's not, even though it's statistical, it's still an art because nothing ever minds, lines up evenly. It just doesn't. And there's the issue of, with your population, you have a district that is extremely diverse. It's probably one of the most diverse districts I represent, I've represented. Mount Diablo is very similar too in a lot of ways, but it's much larger, so it covers different areas. So it becomes an interesting process here of how you actually balance your trustee areas and whether or not you need to make a majority minority district or you have to concern yourself with that. I don't know what you've gone through before, but this will be a similar process because your population has grown so much. Determination is what, what has grown? What particular ethnic group has grown? Are they living in a particular area that would indicate that they could become the majority minority district? I don't know that. My guess is, similar with my experience with Mount Diablo, your folks live everywhere in your district, which is a good thing in my view, but it also makes it more difficult to create a district that would have more of an influence, majority minority, Hispanic, black, Asian district. What we ended up doing in Mount Diablo, we had one district that was significantly high in Hispanic because it just happened to be in the Monument Corridor, if you know Concord, a lot of Hispanic folks lived there. So that they had the opportunity to do that, so they have a district that's higher in Hispanic voting registration. I don't know your particular district, so the demographer will have to help us with that and go from there. What we have here is basically a timeline. There's not, there's hardly any dates in there. There aren't any dates in there except at the bottom. And it says you have to finish this by March 1st. And it's a very streamlined process. It's unlike when you created your trustee areas. There's no requirement for a public hearing. There's no requirement for the, what I call the roadshow, a number of which, number of those we have done, where we have public meetings and have folks comment on the maps and those kinds of things because they were new. And because of the, the way the edu, the elections code is, there's a certain requirement before you adopt trustee areas to have a lot of public hearing input. This is not that, mainly because it's a short timeframe, because you have the census information that just came out last, a month, two months ago, in September. And the elections official needs the information by March, actually late April, but you're required to act by March, so he can put the election together for June. So there's a real crunch there. So what they've done is they've eliminated a lot of the other hoops you had to go through to create the areas, but you get to balance the areas and simply submit those maps to the county elections official by March 1st. So there will be, I'm sure you'll be getting more information from your superintendent and your other folks as to when the dates are. I always recommend, and I'm sure that you'll probably try and do that here, that most of this be done at regular meetings so folks know that things are happening and more people attend regular meetings. And plus, because of the, the absence of a requirement of public hearings, it's more likely to have folks come out, take a look at the maps and make comments if they wish to. And I think we've built in an extra meeting in case there's, the drafts come out, you come to a meeting and there's a lot of concerns, and the demographer has to go back and redraft it and then republish it again to you all, and have a third meeting to finally adopt those. Considering where in November now, and of course, November, December, the holidays are crunch a lot of time, so January, February is going to be the crunch time for us. And the reason the lawyer's standing up here tonight is that there are a lot of districts that are doing this because a lot of you have adopted trustee areas because of the California Voting Rights Act push. So the demographers are busy at work and I have Scott's phone number. I can give that to you if you want to talk to him, but he's at another meeting doing what I'm doing right now. So I would suggest that if you have any questions about process, I can answer those. As far as the trustee areas, the data, you have the data, but that's, that's all I have. We just have data at this point. Until you see draft maps, there's really no, it's really difficult to really give any input into it until you actually see what they propose. You do have, once again, you do have the advantage of having been in trustee areas. You know roughly where they're going to be. Some of those lines will move. And interestingly enough, as I've always experienced, when we come in as outside consultants and we do this and we draft maps and we present those to you, we come to a meeting and all of a sudden, somebody says, wait a minute, you put this neighborhood over here and that neighborhood over here, and they're right next to each other, but you divide, but you put it over here and they're divided from them across a road, like Lone Tree Way or Deer Park Road or something like that. And then they have to go back and balance those. So they'll, that'll be happening. You'll have an opportunity to do that. So with that, I would answer any questions that I can answer as a lawyer, or experience I've had in dealing with this issue before. Happy to answer those questions.
Yeah, thank you. And this is just an item for information for us, so we don't have to vote on anything. But, you know, essentially, the long and the short of it is, is that we went to districts. That was California Voting Rights Act, and now we're redistricting. And so really just moving these lines around. I think that the interesting thing to note, I think that as I'm just looking at this map, just to my colleagues, is that trustee area two is the biggest, but that is a wide open area. We don't have a representative from trustee area two. So just something I think for us to kind of consider as we're going through this, I think, you know, all of us, I think we have representation from all of these districts on this board right now, except for that area. So if you're from that kind of eastern part of Antioch, please give us your comments because your input into how these lines can be redrawn, if you're in that kind of northeastern part, is going to be, I think, very helpful for us. But let me turn it over to my colleagues again. This is just for information. We have a lawyer in front of us, not a demographer. But is there any kind of questions about the process, about our timeline that we're in? Trustee Rocha?
It was our understanding that when we did the districts at the last time, that that was going to be having to be decided because we left that area with lacking one person. And so this next election will be the, actually, the different districts. So I know that that was going to be refilled, and it looks to me, by looking at this, that there has to be balance between two and three.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
So I guess that's the main subject. And there's nothing more that we can do until we know.
Exactly.
You said January and February.
Well, we don't have anything.
You say March is the deadline?
The deadline is March 1st. You have to have the maps to Mr. Kansamia by March 1st.
So who gives us the division? I mean, suggestion, let's put it that way.
Well, the demographer, Mr. Newell will be providing you draft maps.
Would that be at the next, in January then?
I think there's probably going to be before that. I think the drafts will be due before that.
Probably December, I would think.
In December? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. In December, we'll get an idea of where it might be going.
A lot of the demographers are working, trying to get these out to you.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
I, I can't speak for Mr. Newell, but I have other districts I represent. We're shooting at December, so you really have to take a look at them over the holidays. And then the rubber meets the road in January.
And then I'll just say too, to my colleagues, having gone through this or going through this right now with the city, it is really hard to engage folks. So Dr. Lewis, I'm going to be kind of looking at you to engage folks in your area, which is trustee area three. That area is going to end up increasing. And then that trustee area two, I think, as Trustee Rocha said, I'm assuming that's going to be, that's, we're going to need to take from two and put to three. But exactly how we do that is going to be really helpful to hear from folks from the community. But are there other questions from this side of the?
Yeah, I had one question, and you touched on it several times in different ways. I just want to know if you had any other info, because I do acknowledge you have the challenge between the total population and then looking at the citizen voting age. I'm wondering if you have any insight as to what the philosophy was behind that decision and/or, and then some of the ways that maybe other districts have been handling that issue? I know you touched on Mount Diablo a little bit.
Well, the philosophy actually goes back to the US Constitution. So I'd be speaking for the founding fathers to say that when they adopted the Constitution, they wanted to make sure representation was of all of the inhabitants. That's the word that's actually used, of any particular area. And of course, under the Constitution, both state and federal, you can only be a citizen to vote. So there's an automatic disconnect there sometimes. But as you see from the numbers, the, the demographers pretty much can give you an idea that they're going to be fairly close. It's not going to be too far to act between the proportion between the citizen voting age population and the, and the local population. There may be some, but I, that happens, but it's never going to be lined up perfectly. It just isn't. You know, the key is to make sure that the community has representation from each area and representation of you all. And you're not finished yet. Like most districts, you're still in the middle of, your first group of trustees were elected in 2020, and now the second group will be elected in 2022. It was just a luck of the calendar in that a lot of these trustee areas started being created in 2018, 2019. It's when the advocate, voting rights advocates became very active in this area. We've been dealing with this in Southern California for five or six years. And a lot of the cities have been dealing with it for 20 years. The California Voting Rights Act was amended in 2001, which sort of kicked off this whole local district representation for local, it started with cities and counties and it's now down to school districts.
Thanks, that's helpful. Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of put into context these numbers and how we should be approaching them.
And I'll have Mr. Newell, certainly Mr. Newell will be here for the drafts and he can answer the technical questions for you. I mean, I look at these numbers and I go, hmm, that's interesting. I was fascinated by your population breakdown as far as ethnic. I don't know the location and I'm sure, and Mr. Newell will know that, where the folks live. But like I said, in Mount Diablo, it was everywhere. Everybody lived everywhere, which was good, except the Monument Corridor, which is heavily Hispanic. Everybody lived everywhere, which was good, except the Monument Corridor, which is heavily Hispanic. And not a large number of non-citizens. So that became a little quirk that we had to deal with. But still, they're inhabitants and they have the right to be represented.
Trustee Hacker, trustee Dr. Lewis, no questions?
At this moment in time, I have no questions. Somewhere down the road, I will.
I'm sure he will, especially when the maps come out and then we get peppered with questions.
Just wanted to thank you for coming out. You know, this information is extremely helpful. It gives us something to sort of think about and chew over.
Right.
As removing.
Gives you the data background to kind of give you an idea of, well, okay, this is what our community looks like now. What should our trustee areas look like? It's one of your most important jobs, actually, in my view.
Yeah, and we just got to engage our constituents in our respective areas about this. All right, well, thank you. Really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, President Householder.
And we'll probably see you later.
I was going to address you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. All right, so then since we only wanted to move 18A up, I'm going to pop back to 12, which is items for information discussion and action by the board. So our first up is presentation of organizations and programs, and that is trustee Hernandez.
Thank you. I think several of us have mentioned related items like this at different points in time, but I'm happy to take the lead on this because I think in particular, when it comes to our organizations and programs and when we're thinking about presentations, I want us to be very purposeful. I think this is a potential opportunity for us to continue moving our organization to flex and develop some of our quality improvement, our data skills and our oversight skills. I think it'd be great to get presentations on, you know, different organizations and programs we have with the focus and purpose behind them to start looking at some of the ways that these programs measure success and think about evaluating themselves with the understanding that this is somewhere that, this is a place that we're growing as, as a district and a skill set that we're developing. And for many of our programs, they may have a robust way of evaluating themselves, but they also, some programs and organizations may be in the beginning stages of this and really honoring that autonomy of these programs and using it more as a learning direction rather than as a punitive or evaluative standpoint. But you know, when I think about wanting presentations, I want to make sure that we're being very purposeful and that we're not just necessarily, you know, getting information up here without some action behind that and making sure that we're being really purposeful with our time. So that's kind of my thoughts on presentations in terms of coming from organizations and programs. But again, like I said, I know at various times, several trustees on this board have touched on this, so I want to make sure that we're also capturing some of those pieces. But that's the direction I'd like to lead this.
So that's interesting. So then what I, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's not necessarily like, oh, I want to see these programs, but like what in those presentations you'd like to see, kind of?
I would say that it'd be both of that. I think, you know, it'd be great to see what these programs are doing, similar to the way that we have schools presenting and then getting to see all the really cool things that they're doing and having a chance to really uplift and celebrate our staff and those people that are working on this program and the successes that are there with a little bit more purpose behind that to make sure that these presentations are not just helpful for us, but also a chance for, you know, a learning opportunity for the programs themselves as well to continue to work on some of these quality improvement, performance improvement type of skill set that I think as an organization we can continue to build towards.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. I would love to see individual programs, especially since clearly, you know, there are programs that span across different schools and that doesn't necessarily mean all middle schools or all high schools. It's kind of, you know, very school specific. So I would definitely like to see programs myself. One thing I think that would be really interesting and at least useful for me would be to see programs. Maybe one way we can go about it is, you know, programs that are, you know, ESAR funded or something like that. You know, as we're going along, maybe LCAP funded programs. So that would be something interesting for me to see. But what do other folks think? So presentations from organizations and programs specifically, we see the programs in the schools, but.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Didn't we have scheduled that the different schools were going to make presentations and give us their information of what they're doing so we could understand?
Yep.
So I don't, I don't see, I don't know what the difference is. I'm trying to understand what Mr. Trustee Hernandez is saying.
Trustee Dr. Lewis?
So if I'm understanding correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, typically when the principals give a presentation, it's an oversight, it's an overview of what the school is doing. And if I'm understanding trustee Hernandez correctly is, within the school, there may be a specific program targeting a specific thing that may, that may not necessarily get the attention by the principal. And having those organizations come in and present, we can then understand some of the supports that are offered to our students, for example.
Well, is it similar to what I had asked about each school, allowing us to have all the programs that are in that school and know what they're giving, what's working in that school? Is that the same thing?
It's similar, yeah.
Yeah, I think what it would be a difference in it, or at least a benefit that I see is like one day at a time, for example, right? So we get to see how one day at a time works at a particular school. But maybe that facilitator, since you know, these are outside organizations, could come in and they could give it, rather than it being a school administrator. But obviously, I think we do run into some issues, I would imagine, with like, I mean, these are contracted people. You know what I mean? So it's like, hey, come to this school board meeting. So I don't know how that would work, but.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to understand. But if you have as many programs as we have in all the different schools and if we had each one come and give us, I think there would be quite a few. So isn't it where we could have them in sections, maybe? Like mental health. In fact, I was going to propose that we would have a presentation. And the reason I'm saying this is because Mrs. Romero did a wonderful job at the Personnel Commission talking about the health, mental health that was doing at one of the elementaries and how each elementary was going to have a similar, and I was going to bring it up and see if you could explain it a little bit. Is that what we're talking about, where we have?
I think we were talking more specific, but I like that as well. I like that as like, what are our programs dealing with mental health? And then maybe, you know, whoever's creating that presentation can pick out three or something like that. Just keep it a little bit more open. I think what I'm understanding is that we want to look or have these kind of public presentations exactly like how we do with the school sites, but just have it be from a different, sliced a different way, essentially, right? So have somebody maybe from the district office, you know, do a presentation on whatever. I don't know, special education or something related. So I really like that idea though, of having it be in like these kind of categories, mental health. I'm thinking there's budgetary categories as well. Trustee Hernandez, want to elaborate or trustee?
Yeah, I think you all are touching on the point. And again, I'd like to emphasize that the purpose, you know, it wouldn't be necessarily to force all of our, we have tons of programs, but it's a process of which we're starting to build an organizational culture that cares about looking at self-reflection and self-feedback. Because it'd be, you know, many of our programs have some of these structures in place, but some of them don't and this would be a great way to kind of encourage that. And by that, I mean, you know, programs may evaluate themselves based off how many students are participating. It may be on things of, you know, more of a score-based thing. It may be something where programs care that students feel valued and they have a survey. Maybe it's about the number of hours that they spend, that students spend in these different programs. But just kind of starting to create that culture here in our organization as a school district so that we can, we can develop a data-driven, performance-driven school district. And I say that because, and I say that also with a caveat because sometimes people hear performance-driven or data-driven and they think something that's cold and calculated. But I think it's about also honoring the autonomy when we come up with these metrics and we come up with these evaluative frameworks and really giving programs the ability to measure themselves and define what success means for themselves. But I think we need to, I think it'd be great for us to see some of that as a board so that we can continue to develop this culture in our organization that says that we value this self-reflection and looking at what programs are working and what in them is working and how do we know that's working so that we can have other programs have role models to kind of follow that and so that we can also build that into all the different nooks and crannies of our school district. I think it'd be a great way to develop some great organizational tools that way.
President Householder?
Yes.
Maybe I could make a suggestion and see if this would work. Maybe if, maybe two board members would want to get together and talk about sort of what, what they want to see we could get from each of our, I don't want to call them vendors, but programs. Maybe their elevator speech with maybe those four things you want to see. How do they measure success? Four essential questions, and I can include those on the Friday board, which are public documents also. And from there, board members, maybe one of you says, you know, I think the board should hear more about this. We could put it as an item for discussion. We could get consensus and then bring that group back. Would that work? We can start doing maybe three a week, three of these programs?
That works for me. Does that work? So that way that we're kind of getting it in a Friday board and then if we want to bring it up, we can bring it up so that that way we're not just talking, you know, a little bit too open. I like that idea. You like that, trustee?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the key point is again, exercising these skills. It doesn't necessarily have to be a presentation that, you know, that takes up our time here. Yeah, just, you know, a presented like reporter, short little thing in our Friday board packet does the exact same thing.
And I really like what you were saying trustee Hernandez though, is like the measurement? The measurement, whether that's, you know, how, how do they measure success? And I think as like an elevator pitch, if that can kind of be, you know, something that they include. And that could be, I think, qualitative, quantitative, however they do that so that we can then have a better idea up here, hey, look, we have a trend. You know, these programs are measuring their success in this way. Maybe that becomes our local indicator then, right?
And so perhaps in the next week or so, board members can send me, rather than, you know, have to have another committee, board members can send me maybe just one or two essential questions that they would like those elevator speeches or paragraphs to answer.
All right. Mine is what trustee Hernandez is, so, which is evaluating. But other folks, if you have like a, something that you would want all the programs to be asked as a part of the elevator speech, we'll send those to the superintendent so she can have those. And then, sorry, did, no, okay. And then I actually just got a speaker card and it is Ms. Velma Wilson for 12A, which is our item right now. So we'll move to this.
Good evening again. Mary, I just, I wanted to address kind of your point to where we were at with this because I really think that you do a disservice to, to the work that the school sites are doing. These principals are finding creative things to bring into the schools. And when you're invited to participate, you're not showing up so you can actually see it for yourself. I know personally, I have invited you all have to come to see the work that's happening at the schools. And I can tell you, Mary and Clyde have shown up faithfully to see the work. So the schools are under a lot of pressure. And I think right now to ask a vendor that's on their time, outside of their contracted hours or whatever the case, is a bit aggressive to come to these meetings, especially to have you nitpick. When you say you're serving students of color, this, your job is to create policies and to do things that are going to advance. It was really disheartening to hear as the young lady that decided to walk past me, call me the N-word because she wanted me to shut the F up. But yet still want to talk about the black and brown children and she's one of your proud supporters. So you need to make sure that when you're presenting messages of supporting and lifting up the voices of our black and brown children, that you're actually putting policies and you're actually doing the work to help really support the black and brown children. Because anybody can type up something, anybody can be a keyboard jockey. But what are you doing really to elevate the voices of our black and brown children when you are saying that you are woke, supporting the black and brown children? And I just have to say that because when we're out here doing this in the trenches, there's so many organizations that are doing intentional work to support every demographic of this school. Every demographic. And it shouldn't be just the focus on our black and brown children as a black parent saying this. It's all our children. These kids are going through a lot and I think we are going to belabor the time. If you trustees kind of be nitpicky at the programs and what really they're doing, go and see for yourselves. Get out of the box and go into these schools and make an intentional effort to show the support to the students that are actively using these programs.
All right, so it sounds like we do have some direction. We're going to get, you know, a couple, some sampling in our Friday board updates of different programs. Right now on the table, we just have, how do you measure success? The board, my colleagues are going to send the superintendent an email of a question that you would kind of like to be thrown in the mix. And then, you know, I think if we see something like a mental health, then we can agendize it and then, you know, see if we can, yeah.
So we, I was working on a project recently and it was a similar conversation. And what the end result was, was a template that was developed, a very simple template. Maybe it'll take, you know, five minutes to fill out, that would sort of address some of these questions, that would satisfy some of the, some of the questions that we may have, but then also give the provider a chance to maybe explore. Maybe if we created a Survey Monkey tool, for example, where the provider can go in and fill it out and just send it off, you know, a three-minute, five-minute deal or whatever, that will be able to satisfy it. And then actually we can pool it. We, not to nerd out too much, but we can do sort of cross tabs or, you know, regression analysis or whatever we want to do to look at sort of trends and those dynamics. So that's something that, you know, if there's interest, I can definitely help lead because we, I was just on a project that did something similar. And then that way to, you know, to some of the conversations that was earlier, that reduces some of the administrative burden on our providers while at the same time providing us with the information that we would find useful.
I mean, I personally think that that could make things easier. But also I think maybe what might be a good suggestion would be to have our superintendent look into what that would look like and then maybe propose to us how that feedback could be. Because you have an idea of what we're looking for, right Superintendent Nellin?
I think, I think I do. And as you, as you all were talking, we have something called the Request for Qualifications. So when someone wants to come into our district and provide ongoing services to students, there's a vetting process that contains many of the questions I just heard. And maybe we can work through that process and maybe many of those questions are already answered. So it wouldn't be taxing.
And I like that of having it be in a survey so that all of the information and if it's, if it's in their applications already, you know, somehow we can kind of maybe, you know, organize isn't the word, but you know, systematize, I guess. I mean, that makes sense to me, but I also, you know, kind of at this point would leave it up to the expertise of our superintendent.
And I just want to make sure I'm meeting your needs too, trustee Hernandez. Does that seem?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think though, the main point really is to move in the right, it's not to be exhaustive. It's not to put this burden on all our programs. It's to, you know, start the process of how do we start to incorporate some of these, you know, organizational skills into our district. And it doesn't have to be something big and burdensome. And it's part of a tool in addition to, you know, the great success and the great awesome things that happen in our school district. I think it's just another way of continuing to highlight that and continuing to see ways we can continue to improve while also uplifting the great work that's done here.
Yeah, and so like if that comes in a Friday board update or a survey, you know, does that make a big material difference or are you kind of just, however we can get that information?
Yeah, I don't think it makes too, too big of a difference. I think, I think the real key point, at least my key point is to move us, you know, incrementally forward in thinking about the way that we measure and think about data.
Okay, so do you have enough information Superintendent Nellin for this? All right, and we'll just check in on this, just like we've been doing with our site representatives. We'll just keep checking up on this, but programs. Trustee Hacker? Nothing, okay, perfect. All right, moving on. So the next two items are my items, so agenda setting. So I had pulled this from our last agenda because it was just too much, too big. And so really what I am hoping to do with this is that there has been some different reads of our current agenda setting bylaw, board bylaw. I have really liked at least the first half of this year, what we had kind of done in our agenda setting teams. I have met with Dr. Lewis and I felt like that kind of worked well. And so what I'm, the reason I wanted to put this on our agenda is just to add more clarity to the board policy we already have on the books. I think that there is some confusion about, like, what does it mean to collaborate? And so I think that being able to, you know, just. And so I think that being able to, you know, just elaborate on the agenda policy that we already have, just to add a little bit more clarity to it. So I think there's a couple of ways we could do that. I think we can do that by just saying, oh, let's add, you know, president invites the VP. Or I was thinking probably a more efficient way would be to see if there are examples out there and then to kind of work it, workshop it from there. So, yeah, that's really just my attempt to add more clarity to the board policy. It seems like we've had some things that have worked really well, some things that haven't. I just don't want there to ever be, I want to try to reduce any contention or confusion or negative, you know, whatever. I want to be able to work more efficiently. And so, um, so, yeah, does that make sense to folks? Do folks have questions on like what the agenda process has been? And I know that like, you know, each board president has done things a little bit differently, but my hope with this is that we don't have to do things differently, like if we just clean up our policy.
Madam Chair, what is the clarity? What is it that you want to see in the agenda, I mean, this planning of the agenda?
So I think the clarity is around the word collaborate, because we think collaboration means different things.
What does that word mean?
What, yeah, exactly. Does that mean, does that mean a phone call? Does that mean we actually meet? Does that mean that we don't even have, I mean, sometimes we do things in email for collaboration. Sometimes we met in person. And so I think just establishing that in our board policy would be, it would have been helpful for, to me a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure probably Dr. Lewis would have been helpful to you.
So are you saying that the policy could say that you must meet in person?
I don't even, I don't want to say, I personally wouldn't want it to be an in-person, but you must meet, I don't know. It could be me, I mean, who knows? I could be thinking of collaboration totally differently, too.
I mean, I can see where some chairs might be too busy because they have business, and maybe they do it a certain way. But I want to see, I want clarity into that if the agenda cannot be agreeable, then the item that's not agreeable can come to the board and make, let us make that decision and not be avoided from the agenda or pulled out from the agenda, which then angers people that have, are trying to bring it forward.
I completely agree, and I think that, um, thank you for bringing that up, too. So like if there is a disagreement, because right now it says the superintendent and the board president, we collaborate together, and obviously it says more than that. But in essence, that's like the big takeaway. And so I really do think that having some type of clarity around, if there is a disagreement, does it come to the board? Or do, does the board president have that, you know, unilateral ability to just pull it, right? I think adding some clarity around that would be great.
My understanding in the past, in the present, I mean, in other formats that I've been in, is that when the agenda is done and if there's not an agreement, it still has to go out by, because of the deadline. And that deadline, because the public has to be aware. And if there's some items that are not agreeable, then you don't, then you have to bring it forward to at least allow us to make a decision if you cannot agree or to pretend that the two of you cannot agree on it.
And I, and you know, and my understanding is the exact, it's that, but the exact opposite, right? And so that already right there just shows that, you know, if we had one line in there that said, if there is a disagreement, does that get agendized and then gets to the board for a decision? Or like what I've seen in, not on school boards, but in city council, is that if, you know, say trustee Hernandez wants to bring up something, you know, Dr. Lewis is like, no, that's not going to go on the agenda, but then he can make a motion during the meeting to put that thing on the agenda. Now, I don't think, I don't think either of our read of our current policy is wrong. I just think that there's too much left open, just based on the differences of past practice versus current practice. I think COVID has really, you know, shaken things up quite a bit. The fact that we're by trustee areas now, that's why I was so, you know, dedicated to making sure that Dr. Lewis was in the meetings with us as well. And there's another question about, can the board president invite the attorney, right? And so that's another thing that I would love to get clarity on so that, you know, there's, that's not a question down the road.
Well, I think personally that, as you said, we're all district. We're all representing the community. And we have a right to put an item on the agenda. That's the process. You send it forward, ask the chairman to put it on the agenda. But as a trustee, I don't expect it to be pulled.
Exactly.
See, so I don't think that that's fair because we are all equal. And the chair shouldn't have the right to pull an item because we represent the same amount of people as you do.
Yeah, exactly. Or maybe the chair does have that right. As long as, my goal would be to just have that be spelled out, either or, in our actual board policy. So, yeah, I mean, I don't feel any particular way about saying we should definitely include this. Sorry, dropped my glasses. They get fogged up. I don't think that we should say, this is definitely going to be in there. The attorney could be in there every time. The vice president can be in there every time. More so, I just kind of wanted to start the conversation and admit that there has been some different reads of this and just to show the community that, you know, or try to clean up this process as a board to just make sure that doesn't happen.
I understand in city, especially city government where it's mayor control, the mayor has control of that agenda. And in a charter school where there, it's written that way. Otherwise, it's also a joint effort. Unless it's written as a charter, it's a joint effort. So a school district, is my understanding, has always been worked along. And I've never been in a situation where it's been a difficult item. I mean, a difficult thing on the agenda. I've never had a problem with agendas. And I thought, even if you don't agree with it, it still comes forward. And then the board votes it one way or another, even if it's the item is not agreeable with the chair. The board makes that decision because we're, we're five individuals.
And I tend to agree with Mary.
Yeah, and you know, there's something to say also for the idea that a chair is elected as the representative for the board. So there is, you know, in terms of like, you know, let's just say none of us agreed on anything all of the time. There is something to say where each one of us as minority members, as individuals, could put whatever we wanted on the agenda, if that were the case, right? If it were the case that every single individual has, you know, the right to put whatever they want on the agenda. But even that being said, I think that that's like more of a, you know, a kind of detail that maybe is a little bit too detailed for this initial discussion. But I see trustee Hernandez kind of inching forward.
I was going to say that I feel like we're getting into too many details. And, you know, I think in my mind, some of the next steps would be just, you know, have the superintendent look at surrounding districts and see what their policy looks like. And is there any clear opportunities to maybe update our policy there?
I think that's good, too. And then also just what worked as well during our agenda setting meetings, you know, so to look at what other policies there are and then, you know, what we could borrow. And then if there's something that particularly worked for our community, then.
President Householder, when you get a chance, if I could be.
Yes, please. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
One of the cautions I'd like to give the board is the day-to-day operations is with staff. So not having staff input as to what's going on the board may interrupt the ability of us to do the job that we're hired to do because we have timelines. So although the input on what the board needs on there is just as important, so is staff input as to making sure that we get the business of Antioch Unified School District done.
Thank you for that. I think that's another definitely important consideration as well. I mean, personally, when I read this board policy, I think a lot of the, the kind of holes could be mended by just simply choosing different verbs. And so, and then adding a couple of things. But I think duly noted Deputy Superintendent Romeo, that, you know, we don't, we want to ensure that we're not impeding the district of the business. We also want to make sure that we're not impeding each other, right? And so I liked what trustee Hernandez suggested, and let's look at surrounding districts. And then we can kind of continue, you know, to work, work on this as we get more information. So it seems like kind of right now we have, you know, some idea of, okay, we don't want to impede business. Okay, do, do individual trustees have the right as a chair to pull something? Do they not? So these are kind of outlying questions. Trustee, Dr. Lewis, I want to give you a moment as well to add anything since you have been in those meetings.
Well, you know, I think having an opportunity to look at what surrounding districts are doing.
Can you lean a little closer in?
I'm sorry, I tend to have a habit of speaking. You know, so looking at what other districts are doing can be helpful because then it'll sort of add to the conversation, whether we adopt those policies or not. You know, but again, I think that those, by being aware of what other districts are doing, can inform our conversation as we sort of continue to determine what our policy is going to be. Because obviously, there's some confusion around what our policy is, the interpretation of our policy. You know, so, you know, I think that that would be healthy for us to have that conversation and then go from there.
Superintendent Anello, you're in our agenda meetings as well, so is there any?
I think trustee Hack, did you have something to add? I kept seeing you trying to lean in, or did I misread, sorry?
The reality is, I tend to agree with Mary. You know, in the 20 years I've been going to board meetings, we have not, I've not seen boards have issues in terms of the agenda. That there are people who's, well, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that, we want this, we want that. It goes through the agenda. And we have certain categories. We have business that districts have to get taken care of. Other than item number 12 or something, which is items for an information discussion in our action by the board, the rest of the issues are pretty much normal. This might be one area, but that's never really been a big issue because of this items for discussion. And that's part of the agenda. And what like Ellie brought up tonight about agenda setting, okay, fine, you brought the issue up. So one of the options is to see what other districts do. But I would, I would share with you, all the districts I know are doing the same darn thing we're doing.
Yeah, no, and I think it's really just a matter, again, totally just me as individual trustee householder. I think it has to just do with the language and how we say it. Because I do think that other districts are doing similar things. But I think that codifying and cleaning it up, I mean, that, to ensure that there are no other, you know, contention, we can continue to fall back on our board policy, which is what we should be doing and what we do. But cleaning that up or adding clarity to it, I really like that, so. So, yeah, is there, so it looks like the kind of consensus then maybe is to look at some examples of other districts and then, oh, sorry, we do have two comments. Okay, so Lindsey, and then Melissa Case.
Good evening again. I'm sorry, I don't have a speech prepared right now. I did not intend to speak on this item. One thing that I would request when you guys are considering is I think that it needs to be more clear for constituents how we add agenda items. I do know that the Board of Education allows that, and it's not really clear to parents how we can go about doing that, and I would suggest that that somehow be outlined as well. And as an aside on that, and I, please don't take this as a criticism, sometimes the agenda items are unclear to us as parents. I was not prepared to speak on this item because I was not exactly sure what you guys were discussing. And perhaps just a note or a blurb, more than just the bylaws being included on the agenda, would help us prepare better, so thank you.
All right, next up, Melissa Case.
So I, maybe I'm a little bit confused, Ellie, because you said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sitting back there and I'm hearing you say that you don't care which way it goes and blah, 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 blah. But your actions say something different and it makes you look like a hypocrite. So if you've evolved since when you kept pulling the agenda items to today, that's great. I'm all for that. I'm also for clarifying it so everyone is on the same page. So just want to say that to the person that represents me. Thanks.
Thank you for both of those comments. And when I said I didn't care either way, I really was just meaning in terms of coming to some type of conclusion about where the board stands on whether or not, what happens when there is contention between the administration and the board about an agenda item being placed. So I just meant that, you know, the, where I landed or where the board landed was less important to me tonight than just starting the conversation and getting that input. I really like the idea of adding more clarity around how, both as a community and as board members, how do we, what are the steps that we need to take? And I think that's actually, would probably be more of an administrative regulation. And that would follow, obviously, after the board policy. But I think anything that we can do to add clarity for ourselves, for the future folks that are going to sit in these seats, as well as the community, I always think is a good thing. And so, yeah, it seems like the consensus is just to look at what the, what other districts are doing, probably look at CSBA, take some of the comments that we've said tonight and then just continue to have this conversation, maybe at the next meeting or the meeting after that. Does that work? Is that Superintendent Anello, you have enough kind of?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to find many policies that give sole authority to any one board member because that would violate CSBA policy. I believe it's 9220, which is limits of board member authority, which ensures that the board is never acting as one and that they are always acting here on the dais in public. So I just want to, that probably isn't going to be in one, but I'm happy to go research and bring you, I'm happy to go look up CSBA to see if it's evolved since we adopted ours and to look at surrounding districts.
And even, yeah, because I, I think that the individual board member authority, and I think that's called out in this agenda board policy. I think if there is anything about what happens if there is contention, is there a process that happens before the meeting or during the meeting? I mean, I really think that's all that needs to be clarity around. And I think, you know, I mean, personally, I don't want to, again, come to any specific conclusion tonight, but we should continue to have this conversation in the spirit of growth, getting better. Okay, so, moving on, student board member policy update. I put this on the agenda because I wanted to get an update from my colleagues. I know it's been an absolutely insane year. And so if my colleagues would want to give an update, and then if not, we can kind of give direction.
Okay, so trustee Hernandez and I have met several times around this subject, and we've had some very interesting conversations. And so one of the first things that we did was we looked at some of the policies that exist around, I'm sorry, we started with Ed Code to see what the guiding policies were there. And then from there, we looked at some existing approaches from different districts and what we settled on in order, because, you know, I think it's important, one of the things that came out that was important was the idea of equity and voice. And, you know, voice meaning representation in conversation and all those things. So one of the things we settled on was to have one representative from each high school now. And the reason why, one of the reasons why we settled on that is because the concerns, needs, and interests of someone at, you know, Dozier Libby may look different than, you know, Deer Valley, you know, and so on and so forth. So that's one of the things that we sort of settled on. Some of the other conversations we had was that would look different, that, I'm sorry, would not be the student body president because that, you know, that voting process has its own process and all those things. And so the last conversation we had was about a month ago. You know, trustee, mister, trustee Hernandez and I had a conversation, and he sent over some documents. And now we're to the point where we're going to conceptualize and put pen and paper and present to the board, probably in the next meeting, if not the meeting thereafter.
Yeah, and just to kind of add to that, because, yeah, there's been several conversations about this, and they may, people may be wondering, you know, what is so much of this conversation? We've really been thinking about a program that really hasn't been seen in other school districts. Because this is, you know, and the language gets really hard because we have student representatives and then student board members. And that's really where we're hashing out some of the really key pieces there because we'd like to see students in a board member capacity, as Ed Code does state, has the ability to be up here on the dais with us. And we want to provide that to a variety of students. And we want to make sure that they feel supported and that they feel like they're developing their leadership skills. And so, you know, from something, something that we thought was going to be simple, it's, you know, it's developed into this bigger, larger program that through the conversations we've had and that we've had with community members and several people, seems like it's got a lot of really great potential, but there's just, there has been a lot to work out. and a lot of considerations there. We want to make sure that, you know, what we bring forward kind of addresses a lot of people's questions right off the bat, rather than kind of lead us down a rabbit hole. But yeah, and I just want to, you know, thank, you know, Vice President Lewis for all the work on this, because it's been a lot of time.
It's been both of us, and it has been a lot. But also, you know, because, you know, we think of this sort of, at least in the conversations initially, we thought of this as sort of an experience for the students to understand how the board works. But through conversations, we also understand that this is a leadership opportunity for the kiddos. It's an opportunity for them to sort of learn to conceptualize their ideas, to put things forward to the board, to see things through fruition, there you go, the word. So the educator in me, and, you know, the conversations that we had, it started to take on different layers. So, you know, I think we're to the state, to the point now where we can put pen to paper and actually conceptualize and sort of bring something to the board, so that's kind of where we are now.
Do you need support from us? Trustee Hack, looks like he wants to say something.
No, I just appreciate the fact that you guys are doing this in the appropriate way, because previous efforts have been not appropriate, and you guys are working it through, so thank you.
I believe, thank you, yes, thank you very much. I believe we left off that conversation, and like you said, it's been a long year, a lot happened when we started this process, that once you had a sample policy, if you, we would run it through our legal, so they could look. So I'm happy to do that for you, when you have something.
Absolutely, so we'll, you know, I'll probably touch base with trustee Hernandez in the next week or so, depending on, well, there's a lot of factors, but within the next week or so, and then we'll draft something and get it over.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that you said three high schools, are we not including the alternative?
No, 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 we're going to have one representative from each high school.
So, how many high schools then?
We do, we do have this on a document, we had this exact conversation of making sure that we have all of the different high schools.
Because I'm hearing high school, and I'm thinking, okay, the three major high schools, but then what about the alternative? So, okay, you've got that on paper, I'm sorry, I won't say anything until I see your paper.
So there are six, but also, we also have to think, and this is a conversation that came up, there has to be an odd number, just for voting purposes, so we are considering that.
Also, we have to know from you, in what situation do they sit with us, do they not? Do they vote, do they not, because they're not elected?
Well, technically, they would be elected, well, without going into too much detail, they would be elected by their school.
Yeah, yeah, we're starting to get into the weeds of exactly why this conversation has taken us some time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for that update. One consideration for that seventh member, maybe Thomas Gaines, I know that that's, or a middle school just in general, or maybe special education, so there's something to think about. Thank you both for that update and all that work. So, moving on. So, resolutions for first reading, we do not have any this evening. Resolutions for immediate action, we have resolution 2021-22-21, authorizing instructors to teach outside of their credential authorization, deputy superintendent Romeo.
Yes, the board has seen this quite often. This is a resolution to allow a single subject credential holder to teach outside their credential area, very common. We are starting to see some retirements mid-year, so you will be seeing more hiring coming forward to fill those positions, and at this time of the year, it is very difficult. So many of our teachers are stepping up and agreeing to teach outside and picking up some sections so that our students continue their education. So I would ask the board to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by trustee Hack, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. If there are no questions, Ms. Cavalero, can you call our roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2021-22-21, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization passes 5-0.
Thank you, all right, moving along, we have resolutions for second reading in action. We don't have any board policies for first reading, don't have any. Board policies for second reading in action, we have two. So the first one is revised board policy 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment. And so, Associate Superintendent Nabara.
So tonight, we are asking the board to approve, it's actually two, one is intra-district transfers and then inter-district transfers, and both reflect changes in law. And so, we've just asked the board to approve.
And then, you know, we could vote on these together, so the second one is the board policy 5117, in, inner district transfer, so there's intra-district and then inter-district, unless there would be a preference to vote on separately.
I'll make motion to approve both together.
Motion made by trustee Hack to approve both of our board policies, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis, and that is a motion to adopt both 5116.1 and 5117. Ms. Cavalero, could you call our roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve board policies 5116.1 and 5117 passes 5-0.
Thank you, moving on, we already did 18A, so moving on to 18B, our educator effectiveness block grant. And so, Associate Superintendent Nabara, or deputy superintendent Romeo?
Actually, this will be with me. As the boards are probably aware, back when AB 130 was signed, the education budget trailer bill authorized the funding of the educator effectiveness block grant. This categorical provision of the bill is intended to provide professional learning for teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals who work in the classroom, but also our classified staff who interact with our students on a daily basis. The apportionment to Antioch Unified School District is $3.4 million, a little bit over that, and we have until June 30th of 2026 to expand those funds. And so, this evening for information only, we provided a budget, and attached to the agenda is the overview of the grant itself. The allowable uses includes things such as standard-based instruction training, professional learning networks, California Reading and Literature Project, that's our CRLP. We are doing some mathematics professional development, inclusive school communities, ethnic studies training, and paraprofessional training. Now remember, this funding source ties in with all of our other funding sources. So although some look like we're spending less in areas than others, those are picked up in other places, and you will see the LCAP alignment on the budget along with the different categories. So with that, unless there's any questions, and again, this would be brought back to the board at the December 10th meeting, if there are no changes that are requested.
I do have just one quick question. What's the flexibility, because I know our ESSR had a lot of flexibility, what's the flexibility on this as far as revisions? Or is this like a single approval and that's all we're sticking?
No, we could make changes and we must bring it back. We have to submit an annual data report to the state every year, and if we make changes, then those changes that were brought to the board would need to be in that annual report, annual, you know, to the board.
Thank you. So I did have a follow-up question, and it's more for public consumption.
Sure.
Are these funds, were these funds included in that original allocation of the ESSR funds?
No, this is a separate, this is actually from California, ESSR was federal. And this is in, and we only got our amount that was allocated recently, but it is specific for training for educators in the district. So as you look at the budget, we looked at it for standard-based instruction is going to be one of our professional development days that we can provide to our teachers and a variety of other places that we can do that. Now, if we needed to use it up sooner, you can, but we tried to get a budget that would allow us to use it over a five-year period.
Thank you.
So I have two questions about the planned activities. So, the ethnic studies training and inclusive school communities, and so for folks who might be following along, this is our last page on the budget. So, ethnic studies training, it just, so what teachers are being trained for?
I'm going to let Ms. Nabara take that.
And it seems really low, too, in terms of just the budget amount, so.
So at this point, we have opened up, or you have contracted, and that contract has already come before you. We've contracted with Milton Reynolds, and he is leading a group of teachers at the secondary level to start examining curriculum that they currently have and utilize, and look for, identify ways to embed more ethnic studies in what we currently provide. And they are also building toward a long-term goal of having ethnic study courses, so standalone courses. So they're looking at doing both, in fact, we met today for a planning meeting, because the teachers are coming back together. So it's a great group of teachers that are deeply passionate about this, and so they are helping develop some curriculum for courses, and then within the courses they currently teach.
And so it's not, because when I'm looking, I'm like 30,000 or 40,000 total is like, you know, a drop in the bucket over this many years, but it's really just the consultant?
It was also an ESSR 3.
Oh, okay.
So it's in like, to Ms. Romeo's point.
Hand title, too.
Yeah, it's in different places.
Got it, got it. And then what, what does inclusive school communities kind of capture?
Inclusive school communities is, it's just...
Training, or is it like, what, like specifically?
Let me look at what we put. Oh, you know what, never mind, let me look at this piece here.
Because you know, these other ones are very, they're intuitive, standards-based instruction. First page is really kind of curriculum-based, it would seem.
So this one, if you look at that actual report, it does, page three, it defines it in this, in this piece. And so one of the things, we have worked with the Rainbow Coalition in the past, and so this would be, provide the opportunity of bringing them back to provide a series of trainings for staff.
Got it, got it, okay, that makes sense to me, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions about what's, what's in this? This is just for information, so, nothing else on this side? Trustee Rocha? Okay, nothing on this side, okay. Well, moving right along then. So, we have our revised administrative rules for the board policies that we just adopted. So revised administrative rule 5116.1, that's for intra-district enrollment. And then revised administrative rule 5117, inter-district attendance. I don't know if there's anything else that would need to be said on this note, just for information. All righty, we're on to future agenda items from board members. Future agenda items, anybody? Obviously, we still have our list.
The only one I had mentioned is I really liked the presentation on the mental health that was done, and Ms. Romeo had put together, and I'd like to hear more about how we're putting all those pieces of mental health that we put money out into each school, how are we going to, how are we doing it? And I think you did a very clear one, when you mentioned one school and said how that's going to be, what other elementary schools are going to do.
Sure, if the board would like that, it would be more than me doing it, because I presented, but the, our counselors and our staff out at the sites are actually implementing, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't want to make a big, again, I don't want to trouble the staff so much. It's sort of trying to understand how we put all these pieces together, and I know some schools have certain quiet rooms, and I know it's going to be developed in other schools. And so, is it the same pattern for all, or is each school made, is different?
Well, the board approved the ESSR 3 at the last meeting, so we are putting them into all of our schools. What we can provide, and both Ms. Nabara and I could work on that, is what they look like along with information.
I don't think we can talk too much about it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not on the agenda, that's okay.
Just bring it back?
We'll bring it back as an item for discussion, so the public knows we're talking about, sorry about that.
That would be it, thank you.
All right, so, mental health slash wellness rooms, and nothing else, okay? And we can always email the superintendent. And, moving on, item 20, additional comments, which exceeded the first 30 minutes. We didn't exceed the first 30 minutes, but this is a new process, do we have any more? Nope, we do not have any more. All right, reports and comments from board members, so why don't I just start and I'll go down the line? So trustee Rocha?
I think we can share one, and that's the city and school. Well, I can just say a few, and then you can add to it, okay? I'll just mention that we have, the update on the crossing guards was one of them. We're still trying to get the half of that crossing guards paid by the city. And then the report that will come back in January about the safety of the extra schools, and you might want to add more to that. But personally, I've visited Turner and Fremont, Dia de los Muertos, and I had fun at the police Halloween parade greeting the students.
Yes, so I also visited the police Halloween parade, and I got to see trustee Rocha as a pumpkin. So that was fun, my kids enjoyed it. So, another conversation that we had is, you know, I know that there are a lot of conversations around law enforcement, in particular with African-American and Latino students, and one of the conversations we have, and other students, but, you know, one of the conversations we had in the last meeting with the city and school district is to reintroduce some of the conversations where we have law enforcement come and engage in a constructive way with our kiddos to teach. Similar to a Know Your Rights campaign, but more involved, because, you know, some of the conversations came out, actually, I shared, some of the things that I shared was, you know, it's important that we humanize one another when we have conversations, because oftentimes, we encapsulate people as, you know, a law, a police officer or African-American student or Latino student, when we're all much more complicated and we're much more dynamic than that. By allowing us to have conversations in non-combatitive and non-confrontational situations, we can actually see the humanity in one another, and it potentially address some of the, some of the conversations or some of the issues that are present. And we had that conversation, and we're going to sort of move towards developing a program that encapsulates that. So, did you have anything to add to that?
That's it, no, good.
Any other reports? So that was the school district, city school district.
So, you know, you know, actually, I'm going to say this. So, there's a conversation that I've heard buzzing around that I don't do anything for African-American students. And I'm going to address this publicly, because I think we're live and feeding. So a couple of the things that have happened over the last couple of years. I sit on, there's this organization I belong to, and some people might know it, I've done some presentations about it. It's called Alpha File Fraternity Incorporated. It is the first collegiate organization for African-Americans in the US. It was founded in 1906 on a cold Tuesday, I won't go into that detail. But I sit on the National Committee for that organization. One of the programs that I oversee is the college-to-corporate program. I'm developing the national curriculum to train our young brothers, and I say brothers, meaning my fraternal brothers, on how to navigate from college, taking the stuff that they learn in college, and getting them into higher education. I also sat as the regional director for education for our fraternity, where I worked California, Nevada, Washington, Oregon, and a couple of other areas, where I led and developed curriculum around mentoring. I'm also our chapter's mentoring director. I also oversee a lot of mentoring programs. Actually, this Saturday, this past Saturday, I sat and I presented to a group of young men, some of whom are AUSD students, around my journey to who I, my journey to becoming who I am today, and some of the things that I had to go through to get here. So, you know, I wanted to say that, because one of the things, and trustee Hernandez has alluded to this earlier, and I get this all the time, I do a lot of things in the community, but I'm not very good at telling people what I do. So, you know, I'm going to make a conscious effort to be more proactive in that respect, because most of the people out here, if you're on campus, you've seen me. So, you know, yeah, so that's my report.
Thank you for that. And the thing that I will say, I'm trying to think of when the last time we met was. I live right next to the police station, so I actually saw that whole Halloween event. Also, Halloween was amazing, there were so many kids out. The thing I did just want to say in ending tonight is that November is Indigenous Peoples' Month, and, you know, this land was occupied by the Bay Mewoc people, so I just wanted to, you know, take a moment to say that and honor them and honor them in this month. And then obviously, wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. I'll pass it to trustee.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Yes.
I was also able to visit the Black Diamond Award Ceremony, so I want to send a shout-out to the schools for having me. They actually had me present some of the awards, so it was a really great opportunity to meet the principals, some of the students, as well as some of the parents. And I had some conversations with parents as well during that time. And also, at Longtree Elementary, every year, this year I didn't dress as Dr. Skellington, but I was there helping the, helping our teachers and faculty.
our teachers and, and faculty and staff hand out candy, so, yeah, thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
Uh, yeah, um, you know, one of the, the things as, um, the, the world's been opening back up is luckily we're able to begin to have conferences again and so, uh, next month I'll be attending, uh, the California School Board, um, Education Association's Annual Conference and I think is, uh, Vice President Lewis will be there as well and so it'll be exciting to, uh, learn what other school districts are doing, um, in a lot more detail and getting to interact with some of these school boards and, um, excited to bring back some of those ideas back to us. Um, and then lastly, just wanted to, um, you know, because we're, we're not gonna see, uh, meet again until December, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and encourage people to, uh, think about the things that they're grateful for, especially about, uh, after the, uh, you know, challenging, uh, time that we've had, um, and also in addition to that, you know, uh, to take the time to reflect on, uh, that holiday and the roots of that holiday, um, and try to, um, you know, um, uplift and think about, um, the good and the bad that comes with that, um, so, um, you know, I'll see everybody at our next meeting.
Um, Trustee Hack?
Um, I don't have anything as fancy as some of these, but I like to be on the ballot and I, I have a, I, I enjoy talking to crossing guards at very elementary schools, because their job is not easy. And so, it's neat to be able to just walk up to them and saying, who are you, type of thing, they say to me, who are you, and I'm just talking to them and that's cool, and secretaries, the same thing, and, uh, it's just kinda cool to walk on a campus, not on a campus, because I, obviously, I'm there, but I'm not on the campus, but talk to people, parents are bringing kids in, kids are doing stuff, I just sit back and watching PE classes and music, I'm hearing the music, and I have one friend I've known for a long time who's teaching music and I talked to him the other day and he's just really excited, having kids back face-to-face, which they haven't been able to do for the last couple of years, so it's just kinda neat to have those relationships again, to see people and whatever, and classified are different than certificated and administrative, there are different types of people.
Uh, I'm gonna pass it back over to Dr. Lewis, but I just wanna say, in the spirit of things opening back up, in addition to our own school sites, um, where you can get tested, uh, for COVID there, you can also get immunized at several different places in, uh, the city, so the Antioch Community Center, Nick Rodriguez Community Center and Antioch Health Center, and I just got news today that everybody above eighteen can get their booster shot, so I already signed up to get my booster shot next week, so, you know, as things are opening up, let's keep each other safe, and then, just another reminder, I think Ms. Valma Wilson had mentioned the Veterans Day event and so, you know, that happens every year and I'm sure you'll probably see all of us out there, um, starting at eight-thirty with the pancake breakfast, so I just wanted to mention that one more time, and then Dr. Lewis?
I actually have to work tomorrow, um, so I, I may not be in attendance, but, so I was a part of, um, I think it was about two weeks ago, I was a part of a, a project at work and what we did was, it was a restored justice practice, where we ended the meeting and if this is okay, uh, we ended the meeting by thanking each member, each of our colleagues in our small groups, uh, for their contribution to the conversation, to the work and all those things. So I would like to end our meeting, obviously I'm not officially ending, but I would like to thank each one, each one of us individually, so, Trustee Hack, your sage leadership and your, your, your counsel, uh, cause we have conversations offline and you always have sort of the, that, that, that wisdom that, you know, that, that really helps particularly a new trustee, so I wanna thank you for that. Trustee Hernandez, your intellect and your, your, your insights, I mean, sometimes I'm, I'm flawed, uh, and I'm, you know, I'm around a lot of people, uh, that, that speak a lot, but don't necessarily say a lot, uh, but, you know, I wanna appreciate you for your having your intellect, um, and your passion and, uh, trustee, uh, President Householder, if anybody says you don't have passion, they don't know what the word is, so I wanna thank you for your passion for the community and, you know, standing up for what you believe in. Trustee Rocha, your longstanding commitment to the community is unmatched, you know, if anybody, if I looked up, uh, you know, dedication to the community, uh, and if a picture's, a picture of you is not there, I'm burning a book. Superintendent Anello, I wanna thank you for your leadership, uh, and being nimble through some of the most difficult times over the last year, um, you know, are things gonna, can things improve? Without question, but again, stepping up in situations where, uh, things are difficult, I wanna thank you. So, with that, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, Trustee Hack, Trustee Hernandez, Trustee Dr. Lewis and Trustee Rocha, I know things haven't always been easy, but I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you, um, and I do appreciate, you know, no matter how hard things get, it seems we do always come to these meetings with a ref, a refreshed perspective and I really do appreciate that a lot. Uh, Superintendent Anello, I appreciate the same thing, uh, with you as well, you know, we, things happen and we come to these new meetings and we keep moving forward, same, uh, Associate Superintendent Abara, Deputy Superintendent Romeo, and then Ms. Cavalero, I feel like you're the glue that holds it all together, the unsung hero of this board, so thank you so much, you have no idea, she, yeah, I would be lost, so thank you, Ms. Cavalero.
I feel like Vice President Lewis just said a lot of nice things about us and we didn't say a nice thing about him, so I'll just fill in that piece.
I'm embarrassed easily.
Um, I, I think, you know, not, uh, I think, you know, Vice President Lewis, um, you do, you have such an amazing way with words and I think our ability to work together as a board is so strongly only possible because of a lot of the, the ways that you help us navigate those conversations.
I appreciate you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn on this wonderful thanks?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion to adjourn made by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Hernandez, oh wait, sorry, I totally missed, I'm just skipping over it, we have two, uh, our two upcoming meetings, so sorry about that, our next one is, uh, in a month on the fifteenth and then after that, it's on, in another month on the twenty-sixth, so, um, sorry about that, so, motion made by Trustee Dr. Lewis to adjourn on this beautiful, uh, feeling of thanks and then seconded by Trustee Hernandez, um, if Ms. Cavalero can call our role.
Trustee Hack?
Oh, yeah.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn passes five zero.
And it's nine thirty-two.